We'll call the meeting to order. Welcome you to the meeting of the zoning board. Appeals here in Anadig where. Are. Held both in person and on Zoom. We'll get started if you're joining in the pleasure.
Publicity is like. United States of America, this is a republic for which stands our nation under God, universal liberty as a law.
Thank you. Okay, we begin to continue public hearing. Procedure is that the applicant will present their request for variance. There's all the information they feel is pertinent for that to be passed. And then we'll have some questions or comments from the audience here or at home. Those at home will be used, but then be brought in. And had those, if there's any more information applicant wants to give us. They can, we will ask questions of the applicant. The thing that we have to further complete the application. And then if it's okay with the applicant and with the board, we can vote to close the hearing, public hearing. Once the public variance closed, we got 62 days to make a decision. We typically will make a decision on the night of the discussion. Sorry, man. Okay, the first one is Venetia and Associates for Mark and Tina Garof. Owners of property at 3326 Ballbut Park. Proposed addition to not meet the zoning standard requirement for the R O D district. They're requesting of 5.5 foot setback when eight feet are required. That's a 2.5 setback variance needed. 33.7 building variance when 25% is maximum, 8.7 building clear coverage. Variance is needed. 63.3% lot coverage when 40% is maximum, a 23% lot coverage variance is needed. Mark can be presenting it or?
I think Rocco's gonna speak, isn't he?
Rocco is not here. Sorry, Rocco.
Here.
I'm here, I'm not a ghost yet. So, well, this has been tabled a couple of times and last month we, Mark and I were here, but the Zoom wasn't working, but. But this looks like we're on on target now, so. One of the things you asked me to do last time before we tabled it a few months ago was look at reducing the request and we looked at that and. There's a sidewalk that goes down the south side of the house from the garage down to the lake and. We, if we eliminate that, we make a difference of 0.02%. So we're kind of playing with numbers here, I don't know that that's. Sufficient enough and kind of needs a sidewalk, but I think Mark would concur and he's told me that he'd be wanting to get rid of that or. Put in a different type of walk where, you know, it's. It, it, you know, it did actually. You know. It, it, it actually in infiltrates the water, so. Having said that, that's kind of where we are right now. I don't know what else we could move, we could kind of reduce that side setback by putting a jog. And, and that front corner of the porch, but I don't know if that would be something that would look very good. But we're open to your suggestions and we're here to kind of see if we can work something out.
Okay, the driveway. A lot of that gets removed, required that gets removed, is that correct?
That's correct, yeah.
Want to take a look at the site plan? Rocco, you did provide us with a number of variances which have been granted in adjacent properties. Most of those that were prior to, I think it's 2007. Were when the lot building cover. Was only 25%, I'm sorry, 15%.
Yeah, that's, you're correct, you're 100% correct, yeah.
So the driveway would end at the back of the current garage?
I think that's correct, yeah.
No, it would end at the back of the proposed addition.
Oh no, it goes all the way to the porch, yeah. Yeah, to the back of the proposed addition of the garage. Yeah.
Right.
That's not the way it's on the site plan here.
Oh, I know, we gotta look at revising that, yeah. I should see that right now.
Hey, Mike, yeah, yeah. It was revised.
I was out there today and I guess one question I had, you know, we tried to pare this down a bit. What about that concrete that is in front of the house and on the south side of the. Proposed porch?
That curved area there? I'll let Mark talk about that.
Which area are you talking about, where the, where the walk down to the basement is?
That curved area, that curved area is south of the porch, the new porch.
Yeah. What about it?
I, I just didn't know if that was a possible area that could be removed and to reduce the lot coverage.
I suppose it's possible, I.
I mean, it doesn't seem like it does anything.
That's where I do my grilling. We talked.
Anything else, Rocco, you want to present?
I mean, that's it, I mean, we're trying to work that, work the number down, but you know, I just. We're so far over to begin with, it's somewhat of a problem, you know what I'm saying?
Yeah.
I don't think I'm adding any, any coverage that I'm not willing to take away concrete from. I mean, we're not gonna add, add to what's already there, we'll subtract from that.
I didn't follow that statement.
Yeah, say that again.
I was gonna say something.
Yeah. The porch of this, the, the open air porch that's gonna be, that I'd like to add in front of the house will be over 95% existing concrete. The only added concrete I'm adding is right behind the garage, maybe half of what is shown there in, in the dark shade. I'd be more than glad to take any concrete away. More than what we're, we're adding. So that it's less at the, after this project than before, in terms of coverage.
That would be helpful, I think. Well, can you remind us again, I'm sorry, I ask this every time, you would think I would bring my notes back. Um, what is the existing, we're, we're nonconforming in the existing footprint, correct? Do you, what is the amount of the nonconformances today?
It's, it's on the chart.
Okay, the existing building coverage is 29.3. So you're asking for 33.7.
Yep.
The existing lot coverage is 61, 61.1%, they're asking for 63.3%.
It's just so hard to move them numbers up and down, that's all.
You've got a preexisting nonconforming there on the south, how close is that to the neighbor's boundary?
Where that walkway is?
I'm just saying that the dimension between the building and the, the lot, the, the line.
About, about 40 inches?
Okay.
Here it is, from 1.7 to 2.0 feet.
You're asking us to increase, you know, to reset back on the other side of the house as well now?
Well, I am, but I've, the next door neighbor, Steve Bull, I've already spoken to him about that, he's in full support of this.
Well, maybe Mr. Bull's individual advice from him may not be so happy about it.
I don't think he's ever gonna sell, his kids will have it after he's done.
Well, the only thing we can do to alleviate that is put a jog in that corner and I just don't know if it would look very, very good, you know? But it certainly could be done.
But you are saying that driveway. As you would like it, would extend to the back of the new addition.
Correct, and I, I would tear it up from the end of the new addition to the new porch.
And there would be a sidewalk between the end.
We'd have to add a sidewalk in there.
Yes, well, sidewalk's already there.
Yeah.
We would put in a, you know, a. A permeable sidewalk.
I'm, I'm a little confused. If, if changes are going to be made, that's their decision, which changes to make, we can make suggestions. But we don't, you know, in terms of their own prioritizing. I, you know, and, and what's most important. As it stands, we're going to add, we have a preexisting nonconformity and we're going to make it more nonconforming with this, so that's.
That's the request, yeah.
Yeah.
I think that's the problem I have, is you're already at 50% more lot coverage than is allowed. I realize you're not going up much. Building coverage is already, what, 29 versus 25 and going up another 38%, 4 and 1/2%.
I guess I don't really understand, I'm, I'm putting that additional porch already on existing concrete, basically. It's only a couple, couple inches really of difference of added for that porch. Over non-permeable concrete. All I'm asking for is a roof over it.
It's just that, forget your additions, Mark. The point is, we're so far over with what we have today. That's the problem.
I get it.
That's the problem.
The, the map that we have apparently is not what the final is gonna be, is that correct?
No, we were thinking of taking that walkway around from the south of the house around, take that out. And then, according to this conversation, I understand we gotta remove a little bit more of the driveway, so. There's a little bit more that has to be tweaked on it, for sure.
Would you like to continue this till next month and come back with a file, I realize it's going on, but I, this could have been done in the meantime.
I, I don't know what else to do.
Chairman, this is Shawna, I'm upstairs, I'm obviously not in the room, I, I really think that. And if this is necessary, we, we, i.e. Mike, Mark and Rocco and I can sit down because. The applicant's losing a lot of time going from meeting to meeting, so why don't we get this ironed out so the board. Can have something to look at and he can move forward. So if you want to set, Mark, are you still in Florida?
I am.
Okay, well, we can set up a Zoom or something with you so we can get this ready to go to April Z B A. So you don't have to keep coming back and forth.
Okay.
That's my suggestion.
I, I would just like to say, it just seems like this, this application, you know, we come in and we test. We maybe find some disfavor, some favor, whatever, and then we postpone it and then we go and then it goes on and on. I, I, I'm not so sure, we shouldn't just bring it to a halt.
I guess. When we vote on something, we have to vote on. As presented, and right now we're sitting here. I don't think there's any way that they would want this to be what's presented because they want the driveway to go more.
I understand, I'm looking at the numbers within the variances, that's what.
Let's, let, let me request that we table it one more time so that Mark and I can get with Shawna, get the numbers right and go from there. Then present you something next month that you can vote on.
But going along with what Chip said, the paperwork has to be in line with.
Well, no, that's, that, that. This has kind of grown as we've kind of gone along, so. I mean, I, I. I don't want you to vote on what's presented because I think it's, it's not what we're presenting exactly, it's kind of changed along the way, so.
And again, I think, you know, you really need to look at this carefully because. Building coverage are, are significant variance. Is there something you can do with that?
All right.
Are we okay with continuing to next month?
All right, thank you.
Thank you. Okay. The new public, the new public hearing, first one. Is Mark's Engineering, representing Mark Lees. Owner of property at 3516 Sandy Beach Drive. Requesting a single stage site plan approval for construction of addition. Of addition to the existing garage, site improvements will include grading, drainage, request for an area variance. For lot coverage, requested lot coverage is 36.3%. When 30% is required, a 6.3% lot coverage variance is needed. Building coverage of 21.3% is being requested when 20% is required, a 3.1% building covered insurance is needed.
Yes, I'm Logan Rock, that's the way Mark's engineering. Not sure if you misspoke or it's just written down wrong, it's not gonna be an addition on the. This thing, right?
I was wondering that's gonna be.
It's gonna be.
Taking down one and putting.
Yeah, exactly.
It says that here.
Um, yeah, we, we considered that.
Okay.
Uh, but based on adding onto the garage, we would have to raise it up above floodplain level. And it would be a step up, so storage of boats and cars, it just wouldn't work out, so that's why we changed it back to. Have tearing it down and starting new.
Okay.
And that's, yeah.
But is that gonna screw up this application, is this what was posted?
Supposedly then addition.
What?
Variances are, you know, be the same.
I mean, because the variances are gonna be different, right? Or no?
Uh, the coverage variances are the same, but those were correct.
We just have to be careful, do we have legal with us tonight? No.
Because usually it's supposed to be correct and that.
Since the way it was presented in the listing shows an addition.
If it was published.
It's actually a tear down.
What's on the application as well?
Right, well, what was published, you know, is what we're more concerned, because it, this could be just.
It is what was.
Right.
On the listing.
Yeah. It's an addition. Shawna's still on, she might know.
That's what's tear down and rebuild.
Yeah.
That's the question, that was done on.
We've applied for. Variances a couple of times and we've retracted and then revised our plans and then resubmitted, so there might be a mix up. With the town, which one was supposed to be posted and which one was not.
Yeah, but the problem is, if it wasn't plus.
I totally understand.
Yeah. It just doesn't give the proper information.
Totally understand.
Alright, so, I mean, it's. I don't know if it's.
Guess if the variances are still the same.
Well, we can always hear it and then, you know.
If you need more time and.
Well, if it's not, if we have to repost it, we can at least hear what you have and then, you know.
You have how it was, it was listed in the paper.
Like how it's published to the public?
Also public.
Yeah. And that's what's.
Right there.
That's all eyes.
Yeah. Yeah, well, that's what I am trying to go to the. You weren't able to get on either? I even had her reset the password. Yeah, so.
Change that, we had, it looks like the latest site plan in February.
I'm sorry, I hopped off, what's the problem?
On the agenda here, it's, it's listed as a single stage site plan approval for construction of an addition to the existing garage. The actual later request was for a tear down and rebuild. The variance would be the same distances and same lot coverage as in the request, but.
The question is if the public notices.
Yeah, it was a public notice.
It does not have to be amended, it, it, it's fine, the variance is the same.
Okay.
Yep.
Thank you.
All right, great, thank you. All right. Um, so as you stated, based on the size of the building, we were requesting a variance for both building coverage and lot coverage. Mark, my client. That this can be used for is storage of boats, cars and a workshop for himself. He had intended to add on to. The existing building, because why tear it down when you don't have to, but he, he needs this space to accommodate what he plans on doing. I heard today that you're going to be retiring soon and you're a woodworker and part of this is gonna be his work, workshop. So what we're requesting is. For the. What he's gonna be using the building for has, is multifaceted. So the size is to accommodate the complexity of what he's going to be using it for.
I think that's the biggest. Reason why we decided to go to a new structure versus the addition. Was that the floor level would change three feet. So from the existing grade to the new grade to accommodate the floodplain requirement is an additional three feet. So that would be. A little difficult to work around.
Yeah, as you can see from the grading plan, we are raising it above the floodplain as requested by the town.
Yeah, fair bit of standing water out there.
Did you, did you go by?
I, I went by.
Yeah.
It would be good to get it up.
Can I ask a question about that?
Yes.
I mean, to, to, so to get it up to that requirement is three feet, which is, which is a lot. I don't mind, it just seems like when you drive down the road, everyone's garage is sort of at the same level. I'm gonna be up three feet higher than that. It doesn't really matter to me, but it seems.
That usually is handled by.
Planning board?
Okay.
Yeah, that's something that's mandated by the code, so.
Yeah, so that's what it is. Yeah, a lot of these are just, been there far before the code was there.
So, I think they're trying to, new structures, trying to mandate certain levels, standard. Sure, I don't have any problem with it, it's just very different than the rest of the street.
Can we have the, how high is the building moving?
I'm not sure about the architecturals. Uh, it's whatever code is, whatever. 16 feet or, I don't, whatever the code is. Max building height is 25 feet and it's gonna be below that. Accessories. I think it's, I think that's 16. 16, yeah, you're right.
16?
Yeah. It's less than 25, I was looking at the chart that said. Yeah, residences 25, accessory structures.
16.
Yeah, I believe so.
That's something. You're not gonna be asking for a variance there, so.
I'm sure we already know that neighborhood, there are others that are pretty similar in the neighborhood, relative to what you want to do.
Yeah, a lot of the garages are two stories, but that's, that's older construction, the code's changed.
Any questions from the board? I guess the only, I can, you know, if there was some way to make it a bit smaller, you.
We've gone back and forth. Some of it before this was an even bigger structure and we, we, we reduced it even more. We want to keep in mind, yes, a lot of things going on in this shop, but you don't want to reduce it down where it's not facilitating what this needs.
Anybody in the audience have any questions or comments on this application at all? You have any more you would like to comment to us, or are you comfortable with closing?
Um, Mark, do you have anything to? Yeah, no, it's pretty much what Logan said, it's just, there's no base.
Yeah, no, it's pretty much what Logan said. It's just, there's no basement in the house. We have no storage. So for all our outdoor things, it's storage or vehicles and and a shop. There's some areas of driveway now. Are those going to be changed at all?
I mean, the.
Can you go back?
I think.
Yes, thank you. So the driveway currently is is how we bought the property. So yeah, we're, the driveway's going to be small, actually, in the end.
And I don't think we're grappling it any further. We're just going to build the building and keep everything the same.
Correct.
Yeah.
So the the actual driveway, just can we go back to the site plan again? Driveway really will be just inside the side of the building.
Right.
Will that be grass to the north of that?
Yes. It'll be mowed and through compaction and I'm sure it'll be not so grassy, but
Right.
We don't intend to pave it or anything.
What's gonna, yeah, it'll be a hill.
And the south side now is right on the line. The existing building, yeah. So we're bringing the proposed building off the property line. Seven feet.
That's why I was thinking originally that it would keep the exist, try to keep the existing garage because of that lot line where it was not conforming. But it just, it didn't make sense once we had to bring it up to like plenty green. So that's an improvement, actually, in the.
Correct.
Right now, the driveway goes right over the property line, those side.
Those steps.
So we'd be picking up some preferable surface.
Right, right.
Right. Anything else? I think we're ready to close. We'll close it.
Yeah.
Okay, we will close the public hearing and you have sixty two days to come to a decision. Thank you, Scott, tonight.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, the next new public hearing is professional engineering group, well, it's Scott Carter. Representing Nancy Sands, owner of property at five oh one nine Westlake Road, January sixteenth. Requesting a single stage site plan approval for further for interior and exterior house renovations and improvements, exterior improvements to include renovated patio area with pool plus expansion of courtyard area and residence. Requesting an area variance for thirty seven feet rear setback when sixty feet is required from the lake for interior and exterior house. Renovation improvements, twenty three foot rear setback.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the zoning board. My name is Rob Brenner. I'm attorney of law for Mahoney Brenner here in Canandaigua. Scott submitted the applications. We've got a business team here with us tonight that's going to help me present the application with me in the audience. David Hamlin is the architect on the project. Dan Hackett is the landscape architect on the project and Scott Carter, of course, is the professional engineer on the project. As the chairman indicated, we are requesting one variance to accommodate proposed improvements that David will walk you through in a minute. This is one of the largest, if not the largest lakefront parcel in the town. It's about nineteen and a half acres. So we do think that the variance we're requesting, given the grandeur of this particular property is consistent with what's been granted for other properties of this size and grandeur and is consistent with neighboring parcels to the north and south. So with that introduction, I will hand it over to David to talk about the project. I'm also happy to address any comments or questions the board has regarding the environmental committee review. It's middle letter today responding to those comments. I expect you probably didn't have a chance to review it, so I'm happy to address those questions or comments at the end of the presentation. I'll turn it over to David.
Good evening. David Hamlin, Hamlin, our six for the Sands. The application really is, you know, I can, I'll walk you through what we're doing on the house itself. As the application relates to the pool, I'll let others on the team speak to that. But I just want to give you an idea of why, what is the project and why it's, why we're here tonight. The, to the house, we're adding some elements on the lakeside. And actually, I brought some renderings that are always open. That I can pass. These show from the lakeside what the project entails. We're adding some areas on the second floor of the lakeside and infilling a corner on the north of the house. So we're not increasing any setbacks late. We're working within the existing setback to like the sixty foot setback, actually. But it's it's a, you know, significant amount of renovation we're doing to the house to add area on the second floor and infill area on the first floor to give some more ceiling heights, some more of it, living space within it. And so it's kind of bringing it up to date from when it was constructed back in the early days to today. There are things they'd like to do inside. So that is pretty much the house itself. The pool is going into the lakeside, you know, I guess we call it the front yard, we call it the front yard. So that is where the variance comes in. The setback that's being requested is similar to the setback that we just received on the property to north, the Burke Shepherd, that also had a thirty, I believe thirty five, thirty seven foot setback. So we feel it's in in line with character of the relief that's been sought and other properties in the area. And as you can see from these renderings, there's a large lawn area around the house. So as you see views from the lake, there is really no visible impact from the lakeside that anybody would perceive. It is an indoor pool. Well landscaped. So the, the project really entails mostly renovations to the house, but also has a pool as part of the program. And because of the technical play, dimensions required, you know, that that brings up the variance situation. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to Dan. He can kind of walk through the design. Being landscape architect, he's really one who situated all things on the site.
Sure. Hi, everyone. Dan Hackett, landscape architect. I don't know if they copied the power plan for you, if you have that on the computer or not. And I'm kind of old school. I just have a thing that I can hang it up here and all that. It's tough, but you know what? I can hold it. Right, so I do. Okay, you know, because there's some unique factors to the site, more than just renovating the house and how we're getting to thirty seven feet. One of the things you can notice with the parcel, the parcel on the south side sticks way out into the east. The code comes up and around, wraps back around and goes to the adjoining parcel. The adjoining parcel was one that was recently approved by the board. I believe the house setback was thirty five. They had a pool. They didn't have to ask for a pool variance. Reason being is the pool was behind the variance granted. It was at thirty seven. So we're looking at that. We were, you know, looking at, okay, what's going on? How is this land being used? The setback to the south is tremendously far out. The setback to the north, where this point comes out and comes around, and again, where this meets in, we have this unique land situation. So this isn't like out on flat lake and we're pushing it out and trying to get out to the water's edge. It's just really the dynamic of the lake and the way the house nuzzles in. And I think you could see that. It's pretty well illustrated in those photos. Again, when we were sizing the pool and just to make sure I have this right, the pool's a thirty eight by eighteen. A standard in-ground pool is twenty by forty. And we shrunk that to that smaller size to achieve that thirty seven feet and be consistent with what was going to be going on and be built to the north. Um, also to the south were the mills and I believe the mills actually sent a letter in to the board saying that they thought it was a great project. But I think in the engineer figured it out, their home is about twelve feet from the water on the corner, pushing way out. So again, as you're looking from the south up, you don't see this house. As you're coming down the north, if you're way out on the east side, you look back and see it where the two points come out. But it's obviously not like we're trying to push the swimming pool into the lake. The other feature is it has this stone wall that was put in the nineties. And when we did this, we actually had terrorists pulled down. Because if we push it into the house and lift it up, we're going to have this huge, very unnatural looking volcano of grass rolling up the hill and it's, it's going to make this place look mammoth. And we were trying to, again, it's a very low profile house, really, from looking at it from the lake. And I don't know if you guys got to go down there. It's it's nestled in very nicely. So the idea was to drop this down, get the elevation down. This side of the pool, again, so we don't have this bubble of land coming out. We're actually lowering, we'll have the stone wall that matches the stone wall that matches the stone wall. So again, aesthetically, to keep it in the character of the neighborhood and what's happening with the neighborhood. So I guess at the end of the day, as we look at the test questions, you know, the character of the neighborhood, I think we're staying very consistent, lowering it and doing those things. Uh, you know, the only really tricky test question, as you read through that we're answered, obviously, it says, can this be done in another way? And or, you know, to justify. And when we went through this, we did shrink the pool. We pulled back urbanically. They have a sixteen foot dining room table, and I know that sounds, you know, sixteen feet, geez, why?
That's the one that's there now.
This one is there now that is sixteen feet long, had a custom made, but this is a multi-generational family home. So the, the, the mother, the daughter, all the kids, she has two children now, Lauren, she's married to James. They, they have a lot of family there at all times. And in fact, the septic system, when it was designed four or five years ago, when we redid the guest house, which we've done about four or five years ago, that was all sized up to accommodate that because they live as a very close family and there's just a lot of people there for the activity. So again, we did do screening of landscape to buffer. One of the questions from the environmental committee was that, uh, and I don't know if this pertains to you, but I'd like to address it. They said, geez, you know, you don't have native plants. Well, we do have native plants around the perimeter of the property, but this property, when it was put together, we're using plant materials consistent with what have always been there. Because when this is done, we want it to look like it's always been there, not that this big thing was added on. So we are saying consistent within the binocular of what's been used. They're not invasive plants. Uh, a comment was made about the Japanese maple, that Japanese maple I planted for them. And it was in memory of Nancy Sands' mother, I believe. That was her favorite tree. And, you know, again, we're moving it from here over to here, but we're going to dig it up and actually move the tree and reuse it. That's why the tree is there. So it's not that they were anti-native plants or anything. It was more to keep it consistent. Um, again, for screening, this is all wooded. This is all wooded. The creek is coming out. Very nestled in and very protected. So I think when, again, examining the test questions, we're very consistent with those answers for the test questions of minimizing this and making this a attribute, not a detriment. Does the board have any questions?
Dan, could we get them to call up that photograph that we did that shows the Northerly property?
Oh, sure. That'd be great. Yeah, if they, if they, I'm sorry.
I think that would be helpful to them to see.
I think that really illustrates what I was talking about, yeah.
That might be an aerial view.
Well, it is.
Is it? Well, I know we're, are we upside down?
No, no, this is not. So here's the pool. Here's the point. Coming out around, it comes back in around Mills' house. Here's Mills' house. Here's the lake heading north. Okay, here is the proposed pool for Shepherd from the lake. And you can even see if you were to come sort of, again, the, the way that this runs, it comes out, up, rolls out a little and back up. And you can actually see, even though we're consistent, thirty seven feet, aesthetically, we appear pushed back tremendously because of the shape of the lake from the Shepherd pool. Um, now, obviously, we're way behind the Mills' house. Sorry, I got my ball head in there. What do you have, the sunglasses on? If nobody got hurt, good.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes.
Hi, Erin Mills, five oh two five, County Road sixteen. So I am the direct neighbor whose house you see right here. Dan, could I just ask you one quick question?
Absolutely.
Okay, the motor court that's existing, I see there's an extension of the motor court, but it says there's a proposed extension of stone court and construction accessway. Where does the stone court end and where does it become a construction accessway? Because I believe in your landscaping plan, the green giants that are on the south side of the guest house, they look like they're being removed and then transplanted. So I believe this roadway is not actually hardscape, correct?
It is, it is not, Erin. What will happen, can you see me on the screen?
I can't. So if someone can use the mouse, just, I don't know if someone's operating that in the room. If Dan can just show me where that sidewalk ends and where it becomes the proposed construction accessway.
There's, there's nothing on the south side. So it comes up to here. This will be left as parking for, for Nancy and the van and overflow traffic.
Oh, so you, you are, so you are bringing a driveway up along the side of the house?
No, no, that's the construction driveway. What will be left is where it says proposed extension on the west side of the house.
So, so do you see, Dan?
Does this have anything to do with us? This has nothing to do with zoning board, right?
Well, I think he's asking the question because.
Well, maybe he needs to ask it to the planning board.
Yeah, okay.
I, I don't know. Is this, so you're not requesting a variance for this side at all?
No, no, that's not.
Okay, so then, so then I'll just speak about the variance, which is on the lakeside. So Dan, maybe you, David and I or someone could just speak about that afterwards at some point.
Yeah.
I have absolutely no issue with the variance being requested for the lakeside pool. I think it is consistent with the house that is there. I think it improves the house, both from the lakeside and from uh, me looking at the property. I have no concerns whatsoever with the patio being installed and I think it's a nice addition. And then, Dan, I just asked that either you or David call me, just so I understand that roadway. I've just, I've seen the plans, but I've never seen that roadway and that's my, my question, so that we can, we can talk about that offline.
No, we'll get you. It's not a roadway there. Yes.
Perfect, okay. And if anybody has any questions for me, please, but I, I think that this project impacts my house the most and I think it's of no impact to my house, so I see no reason why it shouldn't be approved.
Okay, thank you very much. Anybody else with any comments?
Just to answer any questions you guys may have.
The environmental board, you listed a number of things that they had raised. I'm not sure much of that has to do with the, most of that is not related.
Most of it are, are their planning board matters. I just wanted you folks to have the benefit of our responses.
The only one thing would be about a runoff of water, having a pool that close to the lake. Into the lake.
Yeah. To answer that, the, um, the patios in this additional parking area are designed in such that the parking area will be open granular to allow total infiltration. The base underneath will be basically a perpulation field. So what's put in is three quarter inch, forty percent void space stone, and that's what supports it. But it'll take the rain event that the municipal, in fact, it's going to take more than what the municipality wants of the rain event. The patio's lakeside will have, um, they'll, they'll all be raised with the same stone. Everything will be, then it's pitched, it's pitched the drains, but the drains don't go to the lake. The drains go straight down into the stone. Any splash from the pool goes across the patio into that, into. The drains go straight down into the stone. Any splash from the pool goes across the patio into that, into the stone. And that allows for it to infiltrate. And the idea with the infiltration is that's what purifies water, is it moves its chlorinated water. But you're taking that extra chlorination out because you're allowing it to infiltrate. We're well above the water table. So being five to six feet above the water table with that, we have five to six foot of freeboard of infiltration into the soil. As far as the pumping of the pool. You can't just pump a pool and everybody knows, you can't throw a hose and throw it in the lake and shoot the water out there. This is a gun-on-a pool, so your maintenance is much, much less on those in that, any pumping and filling. But just like we, there's, I think you guys have laws for hot tubs and all that. It has to be properly done, it has to be properly done through the state, and that's regulated by the DC. So we don't have, we're not gonna design a system. To stick something in the ground and pump the pool in there. The pool would probably have to be pumped accordingly, back and out, cleaned, maintained. Um, but again, that's sort of out of my wheelhouse of the legal.
Yeah, I was just gonna say, Dan answered it in a, a much more colorful way. I was gonna say. They'll enter to a maintenance contract with a little vendor. I, I can suspect which one it'll be. They handle a lot of pools on the lake and are very familiar with sensitivities.
Are you satisfied with the information you gave us?
Yes, we appreciate your consideration. Thank you.
We're all okay then, closing the public hearing?
Thank you.
Again, we have sixty-two days to make a decision. Welcome to stay around tonight, we'll get through that.
Thanks, Dave.
The, uh, next one, I need to recuse myself from.
Yeah, we're throwing them out.
Yep.
Okay. Our next hearing is Mark's engineering as well. Um. For property, was it? I guess last, uh, three fifty, three five five five, County Road sixteen, requesting a single-stage site plan approval. For the construction of a new garage, including grading and drainage. Requesting an area variance of twenty-two point three feet from rear, rear setback where thirty is required. Equalling a seven point seven rear setback variance needed.
Uh, that as well is not correct.
That is not correct.
Yeah, there's actually four variances. You proposed the rear variance number is, uh, seven point three.
It's less than, so you're proposing less than what's been published?
Yep.
But you said there's three other variances?
Correct, so.
That's gonna be a problem. So, okay.
Yeah, that's significant as far as hearing goes.
Because the numbers, numbers have changed.
Yeah, we won't, so this one, we're gonna have to republish then if you're, if, if this is incorrect.
Let's make sure we get it right.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, I can hand it over to the secretary.
Yeah, well, actually. Is that what you guys have? So what is?
What's up on the screen?
Incorrect.
Is that what was published? No. No. Bear with us for a moment. Chip's fault, we're gonna blame Chip. He's on the audits, can't defend himself.
Yeah, I think the, the original application, that's what it was.
Okay.
But we advised it after the PRC meeting and resubmitted a whole new application.
Gotcha.
The one that was up on the screen is the actual one.
So is that, do, do we know if that was the one that was published, the correct one, or what, or?
I could add, just the, uh, published, we got a copy of what was published.
Okay, well, that's.
But I don't remember.
Yeah, I didn't, I didn't see that either, so. He said he's got the correct, right? Okay.
The one on the agenda is incorrect. So was the agenda published?
Well, that's what I'm wondering. We're trying to. If it was published correctly and we just got a wrong version of it, then we can continue.
Right, it's all is published, but.
Yeah, right now.
We don't know that.
What is? Right? If, if we're in the year, would the parliament start, start throwing punches?
Throw the shoes.
Yeah, all kinds of stuff.
So the agenda is emailed to us.
Right.
Only four or one variants.
Right. But is that the one that's published?
That's what you were just saying, is we got the notice. That's what was emailed to us.
Right.
What really matters is what was published.
Right.
Where was it published?
That's what we were trying to. What's that? All four were published, okay. So now we, we have to figure out, like, so do we have somewhere where we can see these? We were not able to get into the access. Okay. So I guess, I don't know, what do you guys say? Would listen to what they have.
If it's been, if we're fine. With notification and everything else, we're fine.
Yeah, right? Okay.
Okay, all right.
Can you, um, if you think you do need to read into, sorry, do you think you need to read into the record all four variances?
Oh, yeah, I thought I could. Well, if I had a copy.
I have them on my sheet.
Actually, you might wanna read those out. Well, you can read them off, I mean, I can, go ahead.
This project consists of the construction of a new garage at subject location, site improvement through grading and drainage. We request four variances being, one. Two point three foot rear setback variance from thirty feet required. In addition to be located seven point three zero feet from the rear property line. Two, forty-three point three feet, one setback variance from the fifty foot required. In addition, to be located six point seven feet from the front property line. Three, three foot set, a side setback variance from the eight foot required. In addition to be located five feet from the side property line. Four, three point eight six percent building coverage variance from twenty-five percent required. In addition to have twenty-eight point eight six building coverage.
Okay, I'm trying to read back what you said. Number one is, is on the sheet that was here tonight. Uh, number two was forty-three feet, uh, front setback, uh, when fifty feet is required.
Forty-three point three.
Forty-three point three, okay. And, uh, number three was side setback, um, five, uh, um.
Three foot.
Three, proposed and, and eight.
Oh, yes.
It's a, so it's a three foot variance.
Yeah.
Five, so it's, they wanna go to five foot and eight is required. And then what was four again?
Four is three point eight six building coverage. Variance from the twenty-five percent required. Having a twenty point, twenty-eight point eight six building coverage. So it's three point eight six.
Okay.
All right.
So, uh, now that we've got that out of the way, um. A little bit of history of this site, um. Back in two thousand twelve, there was, uh, a structure proposed. That, oh, very similar to this garage and the attachment to the house that was approved by the ZBA. But since. Some of the code has changed and the structure is a slightly different, it's actually smaller than the one that was proposed in two thousand twelve. So what we're proposing is very much in line with what was, um. Accepted by the town in two thousand twelve, um. As far as the coverage goes, um, you'll notice a shed in the. Left-hand corner there that's being taken down to help with the overall coverage. Uh, in the front portion, there are retaining walls that are. Um, timber retaining walls, you know, those don't always last as long as, you know, stone or concrete. So those are being removed and being replaced with concrete retaining walls. Um, if you go to the site plan. And as you know, everything in red is being removed. Um, it's a. Yes, which will be kind of. Yeah, yeah, so there's a combination of, so the foundation for the garage is. Part of the retaining wall. There's also a retaining wall that's thirty-six inches to help accommodate with the drainage. And retaining the, the earth, um, behind that. And, uh, so in conjunction with the adjacent property. So we're. Reinforcing. The south side of the. You, you go to the site plan. So you see the south side, that pink strip, that's the, uh. Infiltrator that will accommodate the increased runoff from the downspouts and then previous surfaces. So to. Accommodate that, uh, drainage, we have to have a, replacing old wooden. Retaining walls with more substantial stone retaining walls that will last a lot longer. So basically, um, my client, uh, the Woods are proposing this structure. They are intending to live here full-time, so. There is no garage or cover for, um, for cars or things of that nature. And so in the winter months, they want to have access from garage straight into the house without having to go through inclement weather.
Do we have, um, I'm sorry, do we have an aerial view of the property? Okay. Same thing, yeah. So you're taking out that, the shed that's, or whatever that is.
Yeah, I can point out.
Come on up there and let us see.
So here, the shed's being removed. See, tables here being removed. This is the existing drive that's kind of. It's part of the.
The main property that crosses the property.
Yeah, so it's kind of a shared drive. We are, with the site plan, you can see that, um. The driveway is gonna be. More straight on the road and there's gonna be a buffer strip between the two properties.
Okay.
We're also removing some of the existing sidewalk and re, redoing the circulation. Uh, from the front door to the. Proposed driveway.
So show me, if you can revert back to that picture, show me that upper left hand there, the, the pavement. Is any, so is anything changing? And what, what's changing in all that area?
Well, there's gonna be the garage.
Uh huh.
Here.
Uh huh.
Driveway, then buffer strip, brass.
Okay. So you're not, are you adding more pavement or are you?
Taking pavement out.
Okay.
Yeah.
So that sidewalk will be gone and relocated.
That'll be in the garage, right?
Yeah, it'll be a garage.
Now, you have neighbor comments?
I can speak to that. I've spoken with all the adjoining property owners and additional three or four property owners immediately in the neighborhood. Um, three of them provided written support and balance, uh, have no objections.
They sent in letters, you said?
The three, three out of the five, three out of the five property owners I spoke with, represented plans to all.
Uh huh.
And, um, three of them provided support and two of them said we have no objection.
Okay, but did they give you, like, they?
The objections, though, are, are, are.
Right.
Objections.
We haven't sent the hard copies into the town with.
There were two of them, there were emails directly.
Did they email them? Okay, that's what I was asking for. Okay, yeah, if you have them. Those are good for supporting.
Can we go back to the site plan?
Sure, go on.
What were the reasons, what, you need that, uh, variance because that. To the right there, correct, to that property line, that's where that, is there any reason you couldn't shift that garage further towards the house? Assume that's a covered area. Looks like there's access to maybe a basement. I, I don't know what else.
Okay.
I can address. I'm Tom Wood. I'm, uh, I live down the road, four oh seven, four West Lake Road. And I'm the applicant on behalf of the Carneys. Sarah Carney is our daughter. And the plan, just a little history of our background.
Hey, Tom, if you wanna stand right up there, yeah.
Yeah, a little more background.
Thank you.
The inspiration for doing this is so that, uh, Barbara and I are going to with the permit. And in order to make it a year-round home, uh, we need, there's no basement. As the other gentleman mentioned earlier, there's no basement, no storage for either outside lawn furniture and yard stuff or just regular basement stuff. And of course, no garage. In that area, the funny-looking little, uh, part off to the left there that we call the breezeway. It's basically an enclosed breezeway. It's, um, it accommodates six different elevations in that small space. We have to meet the flood level requirement for the, it's a, it's a walkout basement out of this garage. It's a one, one-story garage, but a walkout toward the lake.
Okay.
And it's that back wall walkout that becomes, it takes the place of the retaining walls that have collapsed and need to be replaced.
So wait, say that again. So you have, they've had that fixed and like, I mean, you're saying it's part of the. Part of the structure of the garage or the?
The, the foundation of the garage, to be this far off the ground, meeting the flood elevation. And that will be the retaining wall. It replaces the retaining wall that's there. It's exactly the same height, top of it, six ninety-four.
I'm just trying to help you mean, I mean, the, the variance.
Right.
You can move it three feet.
So, so you have.
Where I'm getting to, this little bit of history. Um, we've looked at the whole site, tried to figure out how we could accommodate a garage within, and basement with indoor access. And we settled on this exact same solution of what the prior owners came up with and was approved with these variances in two thousand twelve. And, and, and the reason for that is because it gets, it's hard to operate at the other end of the property. It's all bedrooms. You gotta reconfigure the house or accommodate in, interior access to a garage. So we've settled on the same solution. It's smaller. We've reduced the size of that breezeway. And we've reduced the length of the garage toward the lake, so it's two feet farther from the lake than the original proposal that. Where the variance was granted for. So within that breezeway, there's a run of stairs, there's six doors to get all the different elevations. The house first floor elevation is different than the, the lower basement elevation of necessity because of the flood plain. And we're trying to keep the height down and yet still have a reasonable head height in the basement. So there's an entrance coming from the front yard, the entrance from the garage to the, to that breezeway. Is on the upper level, close to the elevation of the front yard, then there's stairs that come down within that breezeway. And then there's two other doors that, that allow access to the, to the house. That, that set of stairs coming down to the lakefront and, um, and, and then down into the basement. So it's a very complex area.
That, so the house doesn't have a basement now?
It has no base, but the breezeway and the garage. The breezeway floor will be at the. The breezeway floor will be at the, will be one foot above the, the floor of the, of the basement.
Like a crawl.
And then across the front, there's a four-foot wide walkway that accommodates the door from the garage elevation into the front, into that breezeway area, the door comes in from the front yard, that's yet another foot difference in elevation to that four-foot walkway across the front, the stairs come down to the, to the, to the low, most of the floor level in the, in the breezeway is, is, is close to the, is at the house elevation at a foot above the basement of the garage.
That's a good explanation, when you look at the flat rendering, it's your breezeway turns into an amusing work, with all the ups and downs.
Yeah, yeah, it's, it's going to be a little challenging to make everything look real nice.
So the variances that were granted in two thousand twelve, you said, correct, so they were for?
I'll explain it quickly.
Yeah.
They're basically the same, they're basically identical, but the, this is the five-foot variance that was granted back in two thousand twelve. This variance is the same as what was granted in two thousand twelve. We've improved the the, the coverage both up of the building, we meet the requirement for the forty percent for the whole lot. And we are requesting, it was, it was an error, actually, this, this edge of the building is actually two feet farther back from the lake than the prior the prior proposal that was approved, even though the number of it is wrong from state. So we're just adjusting for this, even though it's farther back than the original.
Okay. I think I got that.
Sorry. This, this is a really complex.
Because, so the
So it's camping.
So the, technically, the additional variance you're applying for is for because the, the variance, they, they go with the property for the life of the house. So what are?
Well, that's not what we were told.
That's not what we were told.
We, I believe that, I looked at the, I looked at the previous application approval before they closed down the house.
It may, I wonder if it's because of the one year.
Last summer, I was told that, yeah, the variance is part of the house, and the only thing we had to do was correct this one because it was an error.
That's why on the agenda it was just one variance for the
That's right. And then it said, nope, you gotta go through the whole thing.
Okay.
Really?
So we're basically replicating the previous one.
I know we've put stipulation in there where the project has to be completed within twelve-month timeframe, that could possibly
Yeah, and it wasn't built.
There, we had, there weren't, there weren't any stipulations, there was
Right, yeah, that's something we added on during my lifetime in the, in the zoning board, so, yeah. All right, anybody you guys?
Also, okay.
No, you're good?
No.
Thanks, Tom. So do we have any questions from the audience, anybody here around Zoom? All right. Okay, well, if you guys still have any questions. Okay, we're going to go ahead and we're going to close the hearing, we have sixty-two days to vote, you're welcome to stay here if you'd like. But as far as we're concerned, the deliberations are about to start. You want us to start, or you want to come back up here, or?
Not really.
No, I don't know.
We could start with this one.
Yeah, we can start with it, whichever. He's here now.
Wait till he sits down, then tell.
Yeah.
And you have to click this. So what do you guys think?
Start with the last one.
Yeah, might as well.
I, like I said, I, I think they're, appear to be responsible with their request, I don't see anything as significant. But there's certainly four variances. But I'm glad he was able to explain that, because I thought that the breezeway might be part of the solution set. And then when he explained what it was like, it's not like anything I've, you know, ever, ever heard of before.
Well, and these, these variances were granted at one time, I, you know, I kind of find it strange. I know the one-year mark is probably part of it, but, you know, I mean, just like you said, I mean, we didn't know, if you look at a picture, it doesn't tell the whole story, so we're not creating, we're setting precedent.
This is a super majority, right?
Is it?
Yeah, it has to be all four out of four, right?
Well, wait.
Why?
Is it three?
It's four.
Because of them.
It's got to be four out of five.
Why do we need a super majority?
Because of the ECB, right, was the ECB comments or not?
Am I wrong?
The county, oh, I think you said Kelly. You said Kelly.
It's not, we don't need a super.
Okay. Anyway, are you guys ready to vote on this?
Yes.
Yes. Okay, go ahead and call it. Sure. It is twenty-three
Twenty-three, zero eight, zero one eight. And then zero one nine.
So for CPNs, twenty-three dash zero one eight, are we bundling these entirely?
Yes, right, yeah.
Okay. In matters of CPN twenty-three dash zero one eight, CPN dash twenty-three zero one nine. Shelby, he has to be granted to do something, so then we're set back there and the rest.
We have to read them all.
You have to read them all.
Sorry. Yeah, can you pull that back up for?
Shelby, I can be granted a seven-point-seven-foot rear setback variance.
What? Oh, I thought you were going to read them all. Yeah, you're going to read them all, right?
Yes, that's right, and it's also seven point three.
Seven point three.
Yeah.
Shelby, we granted a seven-point-three-foot rear variance. A six-point-seven-foot front variance. With three-foot side variance. And a three-point-eight-six percent building coverage variance.
Chevy. Yes.
Yes.
David Emery.
Yes.
Kelly LeBoeuf.
Yes. So my reasons for, or our reasons as a board. We, we proved this, this variance request, the four variance requests, because these were variances that were once granted to the property applicant back in two thousand twelve. The structure of the garage has a very unique characteristic, which is tough to kind of build around and make functional, so that is a part of our what we've used as our decision in granting the variances, it's very unique to the property. They actually are reducing some of the blacktop, I believe, right?
A lot of coverage.
Yeah, some of the lot coverage, which is an improvement. And we're not really doing anything different from what the variances were from before.
Neighbor's support.
And the neighbors are also in, in support of the project. What else? I think that's that's good, right? Yeah, that's a good, all right. All right, that's it, there you go, you can have that one's back.
Okay, guess I'm back. The, all this party continued to next month. Three-five-one-six, Sandy Drive. Thirty-six point three percent lot coverage when thirty percent is required, six point three percent lot coverage variance is needed. A twenty, twenty-three percent, point one percent building coverage when twenty percent is required, a three point one percent of building, building coverage variance is needed.
I, I don't see any issue with this.
Agreed.
It's a tough
You know, I think they reduced the, that one sideline.
Pulled it off the side, yeah.
They would be getting rid of some of the driveway coverage. Fairly small. Might be happy with a three-foot, when I use two comes. Ready to vote?
Now, CPN twenty-two dash zeros eight-six and CPN twenty-two dash zero eight-nine. Shelby, I can be granted a six-point-three percent lot coverage variance. And Shelby, you have to be granted a three point one percent building coverage variance. Shannon, Chevy.
Yes.
Bob, Hillary.
Yes.
David Emery.
Yes.
Kelly LeBoeuf.
Yes.
Chip Salin.
Yes. This will be granted based on the drawings submitted to the US, and we have to put the dates in there. Also, the discussion. A benefit to the applicant, it weighs the detriment to the neighborhood, we're reading therefore the variance is granted. The board's decision is based on the facts as presented during the public hearing. I think the variances are not significant ones, are generally small. There will be a previous non-conforming placement of previous garage, which was right on the lot line. Some impervious driveway will be removed. It is in keeping with the character of the neighborhood, there are multiple garages across the street from houses. Will not have an adverse effect on the property or neighborhood. This will be conditioned on the as presented again, but also the construction would need to be started within one year.
But they already know. Yeah.
So what's the condition to be similar?
Uh, no, just the timeline for completing the project, we always do a twelve-month timeframe.
Yeah, so now the ones, I will make sure we show them before I continue.
Okay, yeah, that's great.
Yeah, there's wording that we have.
Yeah, there is wording that we
Okay, one is the property at five oh nine one nine West Lake Road in West fifteen. Our protection of single-state site plan. Approval for interior, exterior house renovation improvements, interior improvements to the patio area. Pool, requesting an area variance thirty-seven, for thirty-seven-foot rear setback when sixty feet is required. A twenty-three-foot rear setback, variance is needed.
What were the ECB comments on this one?
Sorry?
What were the ECB's comments on this?
Uh, ECB comments.
I just
Had a lot of
They did, they, they, they were all in place, right, just the trees, the
Yeah, not, I don't think any really major one they brought up.
Was the drainage.
It's got the drainage, the pool.
Which I think has been addressed.
I think expanded driveway, I think it looked like on the plan that was there, that, that construction thing might stay or not stay, but it looks like that's not staying. Extra parking here that we have is permeable driveway.
Okay.
You guys, yeah, I just wanted to make sure that there wasn't anything not talked about.
Yeah, I think it was raised, I think, in their discussion, and something, I don't know if it's something we need to look at, when you have a divided property like this, it's a little tiny bit on the lakeside, and then a huge amount of acreage on the other side, particularly if it's really steep like that, whether that's going to be tough to come up with something in the ordinance committee.
Yes.
Whether it should be looked at or not. Not something
Yeah.
But no, because it is a single lot and it is all owned, it's not like it's a common space or any of that kind of stuff.
Well, this plan doesn't really doesn't affect it, lot coverage one way or another anyway.
Other, if we only, if you only looked at the lake. Okay.
It was a very good presentation.
Yeah.
I think they addressed it very, it's a pool, it's not gonna
Go ahead and vote. Call the questions.
Project CPN twenty-three dash zero zero one, CPN twenty-three dash zero zero two. Shelby, I can be granted a twenty-three, I think this is good, now here, setback variance. All right, yeah, so Shannon, Chevy.
Yes.
Bob, Hillary.
Yes.
David Emery.
Yes.
Ellie LeBoeuf.
Yes.
Chip Salin.
Yes. Okay. This is approved as depicted in the drawings and descriptions provided at our meetings today and received. Benefit to the applicant does outweigh the detriment to the neighborhood or community, therefore the variance is granted. Awards decisions based on the facts as presented during the public hearings. Think granting the variance is in keeping with the character of the neighborhood as demonstrated by the applicants. It will not have an adverse effect on the property or neighborhood.
Certainly supported by the neighbors, neighbor's support.
Neighbor's support. And the configuration of the lot is such that
That makes a big impact on Yeah, that makes a big impact on.
Something about, uh. Concerns about drainage of the pool were addressed.
Right.
Yes.
Yep.
Okay.
All right, normal conditions.
Yeah.
Conditions are, yes.
All right.
Get started within a year.
Thank you so much.
All right.
Good shot, Americans got talent.
Yeah. Zero talent.
Nice, nice.
Okay, any other question?
I just realized how that seems like a glare because of my skin's so white. Sorry, there really is a glare, like, okay. You know, I'm the only one that has. We still have the rest of our business. It's okay, I, I, I.
Good luck.
Good seeing you guys. That's all I had. He was friends with me, I sent an abort.
Oh, really? There's another refusal.
Really? See, there you go. So you're, we're all, you can't, you can't get away from that one anywhere. Yeah, I think just try to work through the rest of the. You know, friends.
I'm sorry.
Anything helps, anybody wanna bring up?
Well, I, not about this, but about the iCloud.
I email turn.
You. We'll go over some stuff, though. We've gotta make sure that we get the, um, what's been publicized.
Yeah.
Into, I think here it just wasn't, the agenda wasn't brought up.
Right.
So we have to make sure that those are.
So then that new system, I wasn't able to get in. Did you, were you able to get into the cloud?
Got into it, but.
Did you?
Thought it was easier to do it with the old one.
I might, I couldn't get in. How, so how did you do it? To do it right away or?
The first place you saw. Kim Burger put together the trifold that we're getting out, it simplifies it.
Well, there's only, there's only two spots. You can either click on one or the other and I can't, I would either file for a permit or I.
There, there's so many dropdown menus.
Cause it looks really basic.
Will that be at the next meeting or sometime before?
I'm not sure about, okay.
I feel like I need to look at it right now. How'd you get in here? So, and like, did you?
She said.
I like the way I'm doing.
There were only two of the applications on it.
Oh, okay. But I'd like to be able to sign in, yeah.
Let me ask a question. I, I guess I never paid much attention to the numbers of the applications. But why are, why do some of them have two applications? So means. One is for, one is for a planning board and one is for the CBA. So we're separating the two CPNs. Okay. Still same project, but.
Just says they have another one.
Both. Yeah, so that's just it. So you're doing both numbers, you know, it's the same project.
Yeah.
Both numbers are gonna be approved for both boards. Okay. Yeah, just cause I, I must admit, I haven't really paid much attention to those before.
No, I don't.
Your question, me too. That's good, thank you.
Well, take a look at the, the, the first one doesn't, it only has one.
Let's not have a planning board issue.
Of course, so we.
So it's.
Tied up with us for.
Yeah.
Eight years.
I know, with that. David, I love, I was like, were they want application? I was like, I was like. Are we even talking about?
It was like, well, let's make a deal. I, I figured, you know, what is?
Yeah, I didn't care about any of that.
I felt more comfortable. Yeah, I, I was uncomfortable.
Most pleasure meeting.
We have a, we have a motion for.
Oh, yeah, yeah. Yeah, we need to adjourn. I make a motion.
Hi.
All right, you want to stay here?